Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Fall River School Committee meeting. Pursuant to the open meeting, law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting and may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed knowledge impermissible. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Coogan?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Hetzler?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Mr. Martins?
Here.
Mayor Correa?
Here.
And a salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Right.
Just a point of information, can I have the... Madam Secretary record both student delegates as present as well, for the record.
Thank you.
Kyle Neves. Smayan Dean.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, everyone. We have a lot of people here in the crowd, because we've got some 31 students to celebrate with perfect MCAT scores, which is a huge accomplishment. Congratulations to all of you and your families. So we'll take that out of order so that everybody doesn't have to sit here if they don't want to through the whole meeting. So we'll do that first. That way, everybody can go to dinner and do whatever they need to do. Sound good? Okay, all right, excellent. So we'll do that. Well, the school committee can go down to the bottom here and congratulate these students.
So tonight's an annual event where we honor and recognize the hard work of students in the system who have scored perfect scores on the MCATs. This is a big deal. And you can see, looking around the room, the level of family support here to honor and recognize your children. The teachers who do our work, principals who lead our school, and everyone else assists, the parents, the custodians, everyone else assists under the tutelage of the school committee. We're sure that we have the world's greatest school system in the Commonwealth, and we're making great progress. And it's nights like this where we honor and recognize 31 hard-working students for their academic prowess. Sometimes we talk about all the kids that win the trophies in the sports teams or in the play or in the musical, but tonight it's about academic prowess. Perfect scores on an intellectual test, an endeavor. Tonight, we're going to call forward each of the principals to read the names and announce the winnings for each of their school. The first person I'm going to call up is Matt Damaris, principal of Durfee High School. We're going to have each principal read the names. I did such a bad job last year. Okay, the first one is for grade nine, science, perfect score, Samwal Amush. This is grade 10, English Language Arts, Mackenzie Bolduc. And for grade 10, math, Thomas Panchley. Now, we're going to call up Dr. Amy Braunhardt from the Henry Lord School.
Congratulations to everybody. What a great honor. On behalf of Henry Lord, grade eight, English, Benjamin Hankerson.
And now, we will call up Principal Ponce from Cuss Middle School.
Good evening. Congratulations to all of our scholars. So, from grade eight, Sophia Chen, English Language Arts, Language Arts. Grade seven, math, Brady Lavoy. Brady's not here because he's at his rehearsal, because he's in the show this weekend. So he's at school. And from... So, grade six, ELA, Rachel Lima. And grade six, math, Rachel Lima. Grade six, ELA, and grade six, math, Aduna Lua Olubonwo.
Filling in for Dr. Patterson today from Morton Middle School.
Hi, good evening. I'm here representing Principal Patterson from Morton. And our award, our student receiving the award is Fahim Azimi.
So we're going to do Sylvia Elementary School next. Yeah, I'm sorry. Hold on one second. Maria, come on. Representing Principal Lenz from Sylvia Elementary School will be Ms. Jennifer Grafton, the dean of learning and teaching.
Good evening. First, we have Kyle Boland for grade four, English Language Arts. For grade four, English Language Arts, Josh Batello. Grade four, English Language Arts and grade four, math, Michael Harrington. Grade five, math, Emma Javier. Grade four, English Language Arts, Kyle Rose. Grade five, science, Brooke Tobekas. I'll also be sharing the students from Spencer Borden with perfect scores. For grade three, English Language Arts, Gianna Campos. Grade three, English Language Arts, Ariana Lorenzo Cerquera.
And from the Green Elementary School, grade four, ELA, perfect score, Sarah Cordero. And I believe, Mr. Damaris, that one of the Durfee students came in. And all the way in the back, grade 10, ELA, perfect score, Noor Isa. And now, which has become our customary thing, we kindly request that all the award winners come forward for one big photo that we can tweet out.
Congratulations. So you're more than welcome to exit or stay.
That was good.
All right, we'll proceed with the agenda. So we now have citizens' input. We do have one person signed up for citizens' input, which is Colin Dias, 560 Ray Street. And the item says eight discussion topics. I don't know if that means the number eight discussion topic for tonight? Okay.
I promise to be brief. I address you today to speak regarding the eight planned discussions on the agenda this evening. I question whether the chair of the committee is prepared to make an educated and a well-informed vote and can contribute well to each discussion while under 13 federal indictments, which obviously must provide a distraction to the chair and can no way give full commitment to the school committee and provide the best to our parents and students in this city. And I would also like to request that this committee place on its agenda at the next meeting a motion of no confidence in Chairman Mayor Jaisel Coret II. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is super agenda's report.
I will be brief. Last week, we had a great week in the Fall River Public Schools. On Election Day, we had a really phenomenal professional development day. And on that day, three of the schools that are in the targeted support and assistance category, they met at FONSKA to work on the ANET curriculum standards and assessment work. And the rest of the district gathered at Durfee High School. And they selected from upwards of nine course offerings in English language learners and special education and math and English. And we spent three hours engaged in inquiry and classroom setting at Durfee. I actually taught a class for vice principals around instructional feedback myself and had a great day. It was one of the best days I've had in the school system. It really was a great day. The following day, I was visiting schools with Mr. Coogan, and it was great to hear a teacher say, "Yesterday was awesome, and then look, what I learned yesterday in the math workshop, I'm using in the classroom today with students." So that idea of really giving teachers the tools that they need to be successful in their classrooms is something that's outstanding. We ended the week strong with the Veterans Day week. All the schools participated in activities, and I feel really good about the start of this week and muscling through to Thanksgiving. So without that, that ends my report.
Thank you. We have the approval of the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Correa?
Yes. Next, the student comments/student delegate report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, this week, I'm just going to provide another update about the events going on at Durfee High School and some of the things that are coming in the short future. So, last meeting, I had briefed upon our introduction of four committees within our student government. And those four committees, just to repeat them for the people who weren't here last time, are pride, community service, special projects, and student involvement. So each one of them has five members per committee, where on Tuesdays and Mondays, we spend time together devoted to bettering those areas of the school and improving those aspects so that it can be a better school for every student within it. So, one thing that we tried to do was create T-shirts that show Fall River pride. So, not only do we want to promote pride within our school, but we also created T-shirts that say, "I am Fall River," and feature the iconic image of the battleship and the Braga Bridge in the background. So, we just placed an order for those, and we'll see how those go. But we want to sell them not just to students within our school, but to people throughout the whole district. Next up, so we really want to focus on this idea of image. So, we're trying to take a different approach to improve the way our school is viewed and also how our city is viewed. So, for example, those T-shirts are a way that we want to help, but we're also making a video of all the great things going on at Durfee. So, we hear about the negatives that are taking place, but we're creating a video of every club and all the sports teams. And I plan on making a video on the day of pep rally, which is the greatest day of the year for a Durfee student. We also, for pep rally, it's being streamed to all of the Fall River Public Schools, and I wanted to speak at pep rally and address all the people watching. So, whether it be a second grader at Viveris or an eighth grader at Cuss, I want everybody to hear of the great stuff that's going on at Durfee and not just hear what's in the news that's negative about it. We want people to understand that this is a great school, full of great people, and making videos and speaking to people is what's going to help promote that. So, next up, we had a special project take place the week of Halloween, and we called it Spooky Week, where we had three days of events that were Halloween-themed. The first being a pumpkin painting night, where we tried to invite students throughout the whole school to come down. And what we found was that not many people went, but of the people that did go, it was a very diverse group of people. Like, many of the attendees weren't really friends with each other, but after the night, you could tell that those 15 or 20 people really got to know each other, and that's really what it's all about. We want people to meet new people and make friends and get together and bond over something, even if it is just painting a pumpkin. So, on that Tuesday, we then had a movie night, where we saw like 70 or 80 people go, and we made... We presented the movie Halloween Town, sorry. And we got a pretty good turnout, but we also want to do like a Christmas-themed one, so we hope to engage more... so we hope to engage more students to go. And again, much like that pumpkin painting, we really saw kids of different backgrounds show up, and that's something we really want to promote throughout the year. And finally, excuse me, on that Wednesday, on the day of Halloween, our student government team went around school and we passed out candy. So, it's not really an event, but we wanted to help just spread Halloween spirit. So, the mission was just give a smile or say "Happy Halloween." And what we saw in doing that was that it radiated back. You could see people were happy, even though it's just a little piece of chocolate. And you started seeing people smiling back or talking to other people. And it's really just another way of building community around our school. So, just a couple more brief things is, in my Spanish class, my teacher had actually asked me to do a PowerPoint in Spanish to all the English language learners around school. And we did that, and it really engaged them, and that's something that we want everybody to know is that we're not just focusing on one select group. And in doing so, it prompted us to start writing newsletters to the whole school, just so that people who aren't in student government can hear about what's going on and can be updated about everything. So, we plan on publishing those as well as in English, but also in Portuguese and Spanish so that people of all different languages can read them. And if there's another language I'm missing, I hope we can translate it to that, too. And last but not least, as Dr. Malone had mentioned, the teachers had met up on Election Day to work on improving. And one thing that actually took place that I'm not sure many people heard of was, UMass-Darmouth has this panel of teachers that they come together, I don't know how often, but they meet and they try and converse about like things that they can improve on as teachers. And I was lucky enough to be invited to go by and be on a student panel of like seven or eight of us, and the goal was to help them grow. And what we found is that there's a lot of issues with teachers, but there's also a lot of good things about teachers. And we often only hear one side of that. So, by talking about the great stuff that they're doing, but also giving them ways to improve from a student's perspective, helped them a lot. And it prompted the idea in my mind that we want to go around the whole district and speak to teachers and students and tell them about what it takes to be a good teacher, but also, students, what it takes to be successful at Durfee, or what it takes to be successful in life. So, hopefully, if they hear it from older kids, people that they might look up to, it might be more effective, but I believe that's what we got going on right now. We got our plates full, but we hope it's all for the best. Thank you, I yield.
Excellent update. Smiley, anything? Okay, okay, thank you. We have a number of travel requests for approval. Motion's been made, is there a second?
No, I just have a question.
Is there a second and then a question?
Second.
Second, question?
Yeah, I'm really impressed by the travel requests, especially a couple of the teachers and willing to pay their own airfare and to go to these conventions. I was just wondering, has anybody ever reported out their findings when they go to a convention or a conference, you know? Is it something that the school committee would like to hear once they return, you know, to see the type of work that's being, you know, worked on in whatever areas? I don't know if that's a fair request, I'm just curious about it.
So, if it's a member of my executive team, it's talked about in executive session in our executive team when we meet, you know, every two weeks. One of the things that we could do, and I think it would be a behoove of time, what I could do is get a report and funnel it into the Friday emails.
Yeah, that'd be cool.
Just information sharing.
Yeah, these conferences, I mean, National Athletic Directors Conference, professional development, that sounds exciting, you know? And just to hear the kind of work that they're talking about at that conference. And it helps us to keep a target on the growth in our own district. So, thank you for that, I appreciate that, Dr. Malone.
Thank you. Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Correa?
Yes. We have a number of donations this evening, is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Correa?
Yes. Superintendent, can you please read the donations?
Sure. The New Life Congregation donated $900 to Morton Middle School. The South Whituppa Limited Partnership donated $750 to Talbot Middle School. Donors Choose donated $732.86 to Laterno Elementary School. Donors Choose donated $607.27 to Watson Elementary School. Donors Choose donated $515.19 to Morton Middle School. Fuel Up To Play 60 donated $500 to Doran Elementary. The Food and Dairy Council donated $500 to Morton Middle School. Donors Choose donated $485.93 to Green Elementary. Donors Choose donated $360.96 to Laterno Elementary. Donors Choose also donated $229.24 to Laterno Elementary School. And finally, Bob Wood donated four membership cards for Resources for Rhode Island Education to the Fonsaka Elementary School. Thank you for those donations.
Excellent, thank you to all our donors. Next, we have a number of contracts for approval. Is there any contracts to be separated out? Mr. Martins?
Number seven, please.
I'd like to hold number three, nine, and eleven.
Okay, if we could just say the contract name, because not all of our copies have the numbers. So you have which contracts, Mr. Martins?
The Dude Solution.
Okay, Dude.
That's number three. Oops. Ed and Yudi, number nine. And Roman Music, number eleven.
Okay, and Mr. Aguirre? People Incorporated. Okay. Any others? No? Okay, is there a motion?
A couple of questions.
Is there a motion for all of the contracts to be approved?
So moved. So moved with a question.
With a question on the other contract?
Second.
Second. Not the contracts that we just?
I don't believe so, no.
What is it? Okay, what's the question?
On item number two, it says, provides transportation for CUS Green Special Ed students on Wednesdays. Funding will come from the operating budget transportation. Can we get a further explanation of why it's only on Wednesdays and why it wasn't in the budget to begin with?
Wednesday's an early release day, so they're normally a tiered school. So we had an additional contract that would run just for Wednesdays, separate transportation.
And why, excuse my ignorance on it, but why do they have half-days or?
It's a regular, it's a reoccurring half-day kind of a collaboration day. So that happens every Wednesday. I'm sorry, may happen not every Wednesday, but I'm not positive. If it's every Wednesday, but it is Wednesdays, they are a tiered school, and transportation could not be tiered with CUS because of that early release.
Yeah, the only, I mean, it seems like it's something that we could control, and I wonder why we don't control that time so that we would have a bus available. That's just 11,000 that we obviously didn't... The schedule was already done when we did the contract, so it's coming to us now during the school year, so it seems like an additional. And I'm just not comfortable with the transportation budget being balanced at the present time. So this seems to like it's taken 11,000 more. So that is kind of where the question is going, and I don't really need you to give an answer, but it just, I think it's a little bit questionable.
Some of these items we'll be correcting so that this doesn't reoccur.
Okay. I had a question on the second one, Mr. Pacheco could probably answer this, the Dude Solutions, 65,000. Is this the first time we're ever doing that?
Yes, it is. So this is the preventive maintenance program, and this is basically an assessment from each building along with an inventory, a very in-depth, a forensic look at all of the equipment, serial numbers, age, life expectancy.
But it's new, it's not something that reoccurs.
It's brand-new, yes.
And I don't know if I couldn't hear what Mr. Martin's questions were, but on 12 and 13, are those new Special Ed tuitions that we did not know about at the start of the school year?
Yes, they are.
So, that totals 170,000 that we didn't anticipate?
Yeah, but it's not necessarily new students. It's, I know that in one of these cases, a student moved from another placement into here, so the savings on one end.
It's not making us go upside down by 170. And I'm sure you're watching that budget real close.
I am, yes.
With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, roll call on, is there already a second on the other contracts?
Yeah, I asked for, on the hold on three, nine, and eleven.
Okay, for the committee's edification, the reason I separate them out is there are some committee members that cannot vote on certain contracts. So, we're gonna take a vote on all the other contracts that nobody else has any questions on, and then we will take a vote on individual contracts separated from the total. Okay? Okay with everybody? So let's take a motion or a vote. I think there's already a motion, but if there's not a second, we need a second.
Second.
To take all other contracts, thank you. So, second, Mr. Martins, just so everybody's clear, Dude Solutions has still been taken out, People Incorporated has still been taken out, Ingenuity and Roman Music Therapy has also been taken out separately, and we will vote on those individually. But all other remaining contracts, I assume no one else has any issues with, and we've taken a second, and we'll have a roll call, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yep.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Correa?
Yes. Next, the student comments/student delegate report. Durfee High School update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, this week, I'm just gonna provide another update about the events going on at Durfee High School and some of the things that are coming in the short future. So, last meeting, I had briefed upon our introduction of four committees within our student government. And those four committees, just to repeat them for the people who weren't here last time, are pride, community service, special projects, and student involvement. So each one of them has five members per committee, where on Tuesdays and Mondays, we spend time together devoted to bettering those areas of the school and improving those aspects so that it can be a better school for every student within it. So, one thing that we tried to do was create T-shirts that show Fall River Pride. So, not only do we want to promote pride within our school, but we also created T-shirts that say "I am Fall River" and feature the iconic image of the battleship in the Braga Bridge in the background. So, we just placed an order for those, and we'll see how those go, but we want to sell them not just to students within our school, but to people throughout the whole district. Next up, so we really want to focus on this idea of image. So, we're trying to take a different approach to improve the way our school is viewed and also how our city is viewed. So, for example, those T-shirts are a way that we want to help, but we're also making a video of all the great things going on at Durfee. So, we hear about the negatives that are taking place, but we're creating a video of every club and all the sports teams. And I plan on making a video on the day of pep rally, which is the greatest day of the year for a Durfee student. We also, for pep rally, it's being streamed to all of the Fall River Public Schools, and I wanted to speak at pep rally and address all the people watching. So, whether it be a second grader at Viveris or an eighth grader at CUS, I want everybody to hear of the great stuff that's going on at Durfee and not just hear what's in the news that's negative about it. We want people to understand that this is a great school, full of great people, and making videos and speaking to people is what's gonna help promote that. So, next up, we had a special project take place the week of Halloween, and we called it Spooky Week, where we had three days of events that were Halloween-themed. The first being a pumpkin painting night, where we tried to invite students throughout the whole school to come down. And what we found was that not many people went, but of the people that did go, it was a very diverse group of people. Like, many of the attendees weren't really friends with each other, but after the night, you could tell that those fifteen or twenty people really got to know each other. And that's really what it's all about. We want people to meet new people and make friends and get together and bond over something, even if it is just painting a pumpkin. So, on that Tuesday, we then had a movie night, where we saw like seventy or eighty people go, and we made, we presented the movie Halloween Town, sorry. And we got a pretty good turnout, but we also want to do like a Christmas-themed one, so we hope to engage more students to go. And again, much like that pumpkin painting, we really saw kids of different backgrounds show up, and that's something we really want to promote throughout the year. And finally, excuse me, on that Wednesday, on the day of Halloween, our student government team went around school and we passed out candy. So, it's not really an event, but we wanted to help just spread Halloween spirit. So, the mission was just give a smile or say "Happy Halloween." And what we saw in doing that was that it radiated back. You could see people were happy, even though it's just a little piece of chocolate. And you started seeing people smiling back or talking to other people. And it's really just another way of building community around our school. So, just a couple more brief things is, in my Spanish class, my teacher had actually asked me to do a PowerPoint in Spanish to all the English language learners around school. And we did that, and it really engaged them, and that's something that we want everybody to know is that we're not just focusing on one select group. And in doing so, it prompted us to start writing newsletters to the whole school, just so that people who aren't in student government can hear about what's going on and can be updated about everything. So, we plan on publishing those as well as in English, but also in Portuguese and Spanish so that people of all different languages can read them. And if there's another language I'm missing, I hope we can translate it to that, too. And last but not least, as Dr. Malone had mentioned, the teachers had met up on Election Day to work on improving. And one thing that actually took place that I'm not sure many people heard of was, UMass-Darmouth has this panel of teachers that they come together, I don't know how often, but they meet and they try and converse about like things that they can improve on as teachers. And I was lucky enough to be invited to go by and be on a student panel of like seven or eight of us, and the goal was to help them grow. And what we found is that there's a lot of issues with teachers, but there's also a lot of good things about teachers. And we often only hear one side of that. So, by talking about the great stuff that they're doing, but also giving them ways to improve from a student's perspective, helped them a lot. And it prompted the idea in my mind that we want to go around the whole district and speak to teachers and students and tell them about what it takes to be a good teacher, but also, students, what it takes to be successful at Durfee, or what it takes to be successful in life. So, hopefully, if they hear it from older kids, people that they might look up to, it might be more effective, but I believe that's what we got going on right now. We got our plates full, but we hope it's all for the best. Thank you, I yield.
Excellent update. Smiley, anything? Okay, okay, thank you. We have a number of travel requests for approval.
Motion's been approved.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
No, I just have a question.
Is there a second and then a question?
Second.
Second, question?
Yeah, I'm really impressed by the travel requests, especially a couple of the teachers and willing to pay their own airfare and to go to these conventions. I was just wondering, has anybody ever reported out their findings when they go to a convention or a conference, you know? Is it something that the school committee would like to hear once they return, you know, to see the type of work that's being, you know, worked on in whatever areas? I don't know if that's a fair request, I'm just curious about it.
So, if it's a member of my executive team, it's talked about in executive session in our executive team when we meet, you know, every two weeks. One of the things that we could do, and I think it would be behoove of time, what I could do is get a report and funnel it into the Friday emails.
Yeah, that'd be cool.
Just information sharing.
Yeah, these conferences, I mean, National Athletic Directors Conference, professional development, that sounds exciting, you know? And just to hear the kind of work that they're talking about at that conference. And it helps us to keep a target on the growth in our own district. So, thank you for that, I appreciate that, Dr. Malone.
Thank you. Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Correa? Yes. Superintendent, can you please read the donations?
Sure. The New Life Congregation donated $900 to Morton Middle School. The South Whituppa Limited Partnership donated $750 to Talbot Middle School. Donors Choose donated $732.86 to Laterno Elementary School. Donors Choose donated $607.27 to Watson Elementary School. Donors Choose donated $515.19 to Morton Middle School. Fuel Up To Play 60 donated $500 to Doran Elementary. The Food and Dairy Council donated $500 to Morton Middle School. Donors Choose donated $485.93 to Green Elementary. Donors Choose donated $360.96 to Laterno Elementary. Donors Choose also donated $229.24 to Laterno Elementary School. And finally, Bob Wood donated four membership cards for Resources for Rhode Island Education to the Fonsaka Elementary School. Thank you for those donations.
Excellent, thank you to all our donors. Next, we have a number of contracts for approval. Is there any contracts to be separated out? Mr. Martins?
Number seven, please.
I'd like to hold number three, nine, and eleven.
Okay, if we could just say the contract name, because not all of our copies have the numbers. So you have which contracts, Mr. Martins?
The Dude Solution.
Okay, Dude.
That's number three. Oops. Ed and Yudi, number nine. And Roman Music, number eleven.
Okay, and Mr. Aguirre?
People Incorporated?
People Incorporated. Okay. Any others? No? Okay, is there a motion?
A couple of questions.
Is there a motion for all of the contracts to be approved?
So moved. So moved with a question.
With a question on the other contract?
Second.
Second. Not the contracts that we just?
I don't believe so, no.
What is it? Okay, what's the question?
On item number two, it says, provides transportation for CUS Green Special Ed students on Wednesdays. Funding will come from the operating budget transportation. Can we get a further explanation of why it's only on Wednesdays and why it wasn't in the budget to begin with?
The Wednesday's an early release day, so they're normally a tiered school. So we had an additional contract that would run just for Wednesdays, separate transportation.
And why, excuse my ignorance on it, but why do they have half-days or?
It's a regular, it's a reoccurring half-day kind of a collaboration day. So that happens every Wednesday. I'm sorry, it may happen not every Wednesday, but I'm not positive. If it's every Wednesday, but it is Wednesdays, they are a tiered school, and transportation could not be tiered with CUS because of that early release.
Yeah, the only, I mean, it seems like it's something that we could control, and
that Dude information.
I think it's just important to get that on the record, that that's...
Was that in the materials?
It wasn't, it was not, Mr. Martins. That was something I gave you tonight.
This should be on your desk.
This is our own item. This is an internal document.
You gave this tonight?
Yes. And that was not part of the Dude Solutions. This is basically, the Dude Solutions is going to add on to that current document. That's just Tanzi School as an example.
Is this what I've been asking you to give me?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Okay, I need to look at this.
Sure.
But I, but not right now. Okay, I yield on that one.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Other questions on Dude? Mr. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pacheco, so the four schools are gonna be represented in that one contract, and that $65,000 is for three years total? Or is that individual, $65,000 per year for three years?
So it's $65,000 for this year. Those are the schools that are gonna be done.
RPA, Henry Lloyd, Talbot, and Durham.
Exactly.
Those are the four they're gonna do?
Right.
For that, for that price? So about $15,000, a little more than $15,000 per school?
Basically, square footage-wise. So it's all by square footage?
So it's based on square footage, not total of schools?
Right.
Okay. But three years. So then I, you're not gonna be coming back next year asking us for renewal on this?
Next year, I'll be coming back with three, with...
Different schools?
For 65 years.
Not these schools?
And then the following year.
We'll just build upon it going forward.
Exactly, until all of them done. And, and Durfee is being done by the contractor and by our OPM. So we'll have exactly what Dude Solutions is doing for us, for them to enter in.
So this contract is for the four schools, the square footage contained within those four schools for the three years?
Exactly.
And then in the future, you'll bring back additional schools with their square footage and a cost for the committee to consider?
Yes.
With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Mr. Aguirre.
Quick question, is, is Dude Solutions school Dude?
Yes.
And when we pay the other fees that we pay for them, we're gonna have access to this software for free going forward?
No, this, this software will have a renewal, renewal fee each year, or user fee each year.
And what would that cost? So basically, we're putting, they're gonna put the data into a system that we have to keep on paying. Otherwise, we lose the data?
Just like the current one we have now. Yes. So Dude Solutions that we use currently right now for work orders, that's, and, and some maintenance that is currently a subscription, a subscription each year.
And do you have that amount?
I can get that for you in one second.
If you don't have it handy, it's not the end of the world, but I think you understand the concern would be to just know what our costs are gonna be, you know, year, year over year for not only these schools and then additional schools. Preventative maintenance is important, but I think we have $100,000 budgeted in the budget, if I recall. Here's 65 out, you know, I get the, it's important to do, but also, we need to get the full picture of what it's gonna cost us for all of these things. If you don't have it now, that's fine, we can get it.
Yeah, I don't have it currently.
I'm sure we can get a copy of it at some point.
Absolutely.
Thank you, I yield.
Mr. Superintendent, you wanna weigh in?
I just wanna be real clear that last year, at the city council, we went through the budget cycle, we talked about each year growing that line item and that count to ensure that we get to a place where we're at the 2.5% required for preventative maintenance in the budget. So it's gonna take us a couple of years to build.
You're more hopeful than I am about that part, but are you?
I, I, I am a, I'm a dealer in hope.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Corey.
Hi. Mr. Pacheco, just to help me understand what Dude Solutions is capable of. Last year, we had a really tough year at Durfee High School.
Yes.
And so we had a breakdown of the cooling system, we had the, the water pipe that burst into a major flood. Is something like this helping us to maybe prevent those kinds of issues?
So the maintenance on the chiller, for instance, the fact that we, we got 20 years out of that particular unit is remarkable. Couldn't get 21. So that situation, this probably wouldn't have done it, but we would be able to forecast motors, for instance, which I said, you know, Durfee probably has well over 100 motors throughout that building, operating different fans, ventilator units, and so on. Those, we're going to be able to take care of before they, before they break down. We're gonna be able to see what kind of situations we have now, if they're running at capacity. But that goes through boilers, our rooftop units, chillers.
Yeah.
It's, it's kind of a soup-to-nuts setup where that Dude will provide us, and there are going to be situations where we're gonna be able to avoid situations that could close schools down. For instance, at Tanzi, we had that power failure due to a main breaker, and part of this, all of that stuff will be, will be basically tagged as an item that would need an infrared look at it. So if we infrared that panel, we would've known that that breaker was going to go. We wouldn't be able to see it. It's not a visual thing, but an infrared test would do that. That'll be part of the system, and in fact, it's in the Tanzi one right now, that's one of the electrical items that will be done on a three-year basis.
Yes. Thank you very much, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Hetzel.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Pacheco, I was just curious, as well as my colleague, Committee Man Aguirre, about the software costs.
Yes.
I was concerned that we wouldn't have access to this software, and who had access?
So we, we always have access.
Right.
The only thing that they're going to provide us with is obviously all the updates to the system, any, any new features of the system that they will automatically upgrade every year to us, and there are certain data that they are going to provide us, or are certain visits they will provide us on certain items. So the Durfee item, for instance, that's gonna come in as a full package. That's not going to be an extra cost to us. That's gonna be just added into the system, so that we will have Durfee High School online the second it opens, with all of the data that they've collected on all the other schools.
Right, so this'll help us forecast maintenance costs?
Absolutely.
So the software, basically, will tell you in three months, you have to replace X, Y, and Z.
Right.
All right.
And also, our vendors will be able to access that system for the work that they do. So for instance, FirePro, DDS, ENE, will all have access to the system. So if they change a transformer, or if FirePro changes a sprinkler head, or, or a valve, or some kind of indicator, it's gonna go right into the system. So we will know exactly when it was changed and the costs.
Okay, so if you can get that, the software costs?
I will.
I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Martins?
On the Edge, Edge Newity contract...
Mr. Martins, hold on. Let's just take, we're gonna just take the votes individually. So we've concluded with Dude Solutions, I'm gonna call for a vote. Motion to approve has been made. Is there a second? Second roll call, please. This is on Dude Solutions.
Mr. Coogan.
Yes.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Martins.
Yes.
Mayor Correa.
Yes.
Mr. Martins, you have the floor.
On the Edge Newity contract for $32,500, part of this says the, in addition, Perkins Grant will pay $10,000 toward the total contract. It's my understanding that Perkins Grant is for Perk, Chapter 74 programs. This is not exactly a Chapter 74 program, and I'm wondering if the vocational programs have all the supplies that they need? Does the carpentry program or the building construction program have all of the lumber that is needed? Or are they still, the students still straining out nails to reuse them, which has happened in the past? I guess the question really is, why is, why isn't that money being utilized for Chapter 74 programs, which is intent?
Mr. Martin.
Sure, thank you. It is being used by Chapter 74 students. So we have many students that want to be in CTE certification programs, but can't, but they're also college-bound, and to meet admission requirements, they can't fit all the coursework that they need as well as doing the CT. So for example, a student in, in the cosmetology program that's got half their day as a senior in, in the, in the shop, they don't have more than a couple extra periods to fit in the other academics, so they go to the online platform. We've had students do history courses that way, math courses, et cetera.
This is an online program?
Edge Newity is online.
Well, that makes a big difference, because I support the fact that the students who do take their vocational program can and do, I'll say that again, can and do go on to post-secondary education. And I'm a proponent, a high proponent of having vocational programs for students. You know, if you're majoring in drafting or something of this nature, you can go on to UMass Dartmouth or any engineering school, and guess what? They have a drafting program, and they have to take it for draft for engineers. So this didn't indicate that this was an online program, so I'm pleased that you cleared that up. For that, I support it, because of the fact that the vocational students, I understand, cosmetology has a number of hours that they have to do by regulation in order to get the license with that. Now, if they're spending time with cosmetologists, that's what they wanna do, then they might not be able to have another course or something. And if this is an online program, then that is fantastic. Now they have the availability of it, so I appreciate that. With that, I yield on number nine, and I approve it.
Thank you. Mr. Aguirre.
Just a quick question for the superintendent, probably. At one of the alternative meetings, we asked about this Edge Newity for RPA as well as this, and you might not have the data now, but are these together? The question at the time was, how do we pay for the ones that RPA is using as well as them, and does it make sense to bundle them all together for the Fall Republic Schools so we save some money on that? So I'm not looking at if you had that info, but if you could get it. And my second question is, was this already approved in the, when they did zero-based budgeting out of the textbook claim?
Yeah, because...
I can, I can respond, I can respond to that. So for, so this, so the way Edge Newity works is it's site-based, so you have to, so we tried that, we tried to bundle it into one package, and they don't work that way. It's one online platform for RPA, one online platform for Durfee. So that's just the way that company works, so that's, we weren't able to do any sort of savings there. But yes, and yes, for your second question, it was budgeted in the zero-based budget.
So I would say Edge Newity needs to either, assuming that it was gonna save money, they either work with the school system or we go somewhere else. There's so many competition, much competition out there, and when I was working in a district we had them come down, they wanted, I don't buy that excuse personally, so maybe if you can get us on a separate cover, how much we're paying each one?
Sure.
It definitely would make sense to bundle...
It's about, it's about the same price. They're about $30,000 each, for each site.
Yeah, just when you look at the volume, yeah, how many licenses you have, how much time, all that stuff. This is where we need to be, but if we can save money, we should save money.
Absolutely. It's much harder in a multi-unit system.
Say it again.
It's much harder in a multi-unit system, because they are by site, not by volume. So all these companies are the same. So for example, ANET, I wish I could get a deal on ANET, but it's $33,000 per building. That's their rate. That's the way it is. And I'm a pretty high bargainer.
Yeah.
But that's what they say.
I mean, if you, we got kids that log in from home on the internet, so I don't wanna debate it, but if they were told they're not gonna get the 32 grand, they'd change their tune, because it's an online program. So you get your code, you log in to the Fall Republic Schools. It, it, you know, I'm sure that it can be worked out, but just I thought that I think we should look at it. I yield.
Sure.
Thank you. All right, is there a motion to approve this contract?
So moved.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second roll call, please. This is the Ingenuity.
Mr. Aguirre.
Yes.
Mr. Coogan.
Yes.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Martins.
Yes.
Mayor Correa.
Yes.
Mr. Martins, you still have the floor, and the final contract that you discussed was Roman music therapy.
Yes. What is this supposed to do for the students? I need an explanation of therapy evaluation.
This, this out-of-district student that we have has had this in their IEP since they've gone out of district, and so each and every year, she's, the student has had it, and it's been under $10,000, so it hasn't required a contract. This year, it so happens that it's over $10,000 and requires a contract.
Motion to approve.
Wait a minute. Do you mind if I, I speak? I can hear you.
There is, there is a motion on the floor, Mr. Martins.
Second.
You can still speak on the motion, but there has been a motion made and seconded on the motion, Mr. Martins.
Well, I, I object. We, I had asked for a...
Objection to a motion?
No, no, Mr. Martins, the motion was just made, you still have the floor to speak on the motion. The vice chair made a motion, it was seconded, but you still have the floor to speak on the motion.
Actually, just as a point of order, just so my colleague understands procedure, there needs to be a motion on the floor prior to discussion, because if not, what are we discussing? So procedurally, there should be a motion, a second, and then discussion, not discussion on a motion that doesn't exist. So therefore, there's a motion.
Well, I will remind the vice chair of our parliamentary procedure at some point in time as well.
Well, I'd love to have that conversation.
Okay, absolutely.
You show me, Mr. Martins, in Robert's Rules of Order, where a motion isn't required before discussion, I'd love to have that conversation.
Mr. Martins, you have the floor. There has been a motion to approve this contract. Your question, please.
My question is, what is this going to do for students? And I need an explanation of therapy and evaluation, and nothing here said anything about an out-of-district student.
Can I answer?
Yes.
Mr. Superintendent.
I'd love to invite you to come visit some of these classrooms for some of the kids that we're talking about right now, but these are for our, the, music therapy is a research-based practice for special-needs students that perhaps can't communicate in ways that, that other students can communicate in. So the music therapy is used to act as a stimulant to be able to engage students who are in special-need classrooms, and these are our most needy students. So we use music therapy, we also use it back to PE. The music therapy, I know Mr. Corey is, went and visited a drumming program that does something very similar, but this is very specific, because it's written into a student's IEP, which is a legally-bound document, and so we have to honor the expense, and as Mr. Almeida explained to you, it used to be under $10,000, and now it's not, and we're bringing it forward for the committee's approval, because we're fully transparent in all that we do.
Well, I, do I still have the floor?
You do.
Yes.
It would be very helpful if there was a little more detail in regards to this is for an out-of-district placement. Just like number, the one below it, it does clearly say out-of-district student, but this one does not. So, you know, and, Mr. Superintendent, I'd love to cheer two or some schools. I think I've hinted, hinted that to you several times, but I've never been, I never received a reply.
Well, I'm not gonna argue with you, Mr. Martins, but I'm in schools every single day.
Oh, I know you are.
You can come to schools with me anytime you want. I've taken pretty much every single person in this committee.
That's outside the scope of the, the item that's before us. So there is a, there is a motion on the floor to approve this contract. There was a second. I'm not gonna entertain any further for the, for the discussion, because we're going off the rails here, so roll call.
Mr. Aguirre.
Yes.
Mr. Coogan.
Yes.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Martins.
Now that I know what it's for, yes.
Mayor Correa.
Yes. Okay, and finally...
I move number seven with a roll call. Second, please.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Aguirre.
Yes.
Mr. Coogan.
I'm staying.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Martins.
Yes.
Mayor Correa.
Yes.
There are no grants this evening, but we do have several items for discussion. The first is a presentation discussion, Human Resources Audit Report, presented by Mr. Tom Coogan. We do have the report here for the committee for our digestion. Any discussion, any comments, questions?
Discussion, yes, I do have.
Okay. Just queuing it up. Mr. Martins, anybody else?
Well, was there a motion to process this, or?
This is a discussion item, Mr. Martins, so it is for, for discussion.
Nice. Just wanted to make sure.
Mr. Coogan, do you have any, any comments, or do you wanna go right into discussion and questions?
I just, I did place before each one of you this evening a copy of the, the PowerPoint slides I can, I can review, or if you like, I could just take the information under advisement. There was a misprint in the PowerPoint slides, that's why I gave you all an additional copy.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Martins, you have the floor.
On section four...
Okay.
...indicating salaries?
Yes.
I noticed that you have Somerset, Swan, Totten, Dartmouth, New Bedford, Seco, Fall River, and the average. What about Swansea, Westport, and Diamond?
So within the appendix, I put in a survey that was recently done through HR departments and finance departments in some regional schools, I believe it was about 18 or 19 schools included in there. If the information for the current contract was available online, I researched that information and included it in. My goal in including this information for you was that we're frequently compared to other gateway cities in terms of demographics and, and teacher results, and I wanted to get a better snapshot of the actual local area. So there was no intent to exclude, it was just what was available to me.
Well, but we live in the greater Fall River area. And certainly, the, the cost involved in any one particular school system should be looked at as, especially during the conference negotiations with regards to just how competitive are we in there. Now, I won't go into the history of Westport, and I won't, and I won't go into either Swansea or Diamond as well, but nevertheless, it would be nice to be able to contact them, because, you know, when you say other gateway cities, just about every city in the, in know, when you say "other gateway cities," just about every city in the state of Massachusetts is a gateway city now in there. And, you know, some live in a more expensive community, and some do not, but nevertheless, we're in Fall River. And if I'm not mistaking, the median income for a family of four in the city of Fall River is $36,000. Now, that's not a whole heck of a lot for a family of four. So when you're talking about money and you're making comparisons to communities, I don't really care about law, but I do care about Fall River and the surrounding communities as to just how competitive we are.
Well, my intent in including that part along with the top portion of number four was that it was referenced, the diversity of our workforce was referenced in the original HR report, and so I thought it was important to not only compare the diversity with some of the surrounding communities, but also how the salary impacts the pool in which we recruit from. So that was really the reason for including both the salary and the diversity information together.
I understand that, but we live in this area, and I like to be compared to Westport and Somerset and Swansea, you know, just for food for thought. Number six, professional development. Down at the bottom of the page, where it mentions in regards to the professional development points, I know that teachers are required to establish X number of professional development points in order to maintain their license in there. And the school department is required to provide opportunities for the students, for the teachers, to be able to establish or renew their licenses in there. That can be done in many, many ways, but what I'm looking for in here is, is there any additional cost associated with the bottom three bullets that are there?
So with respect to the first bullet, with regards to the professional development points, no, there is no additional cost. We have created a way with the assistance of the Office of Instruction and Mr. Michael Azic to be able to... The Office of Instruction is responsible for the professional development opportunities, and as Dr. Malone referenced earlier in his comments, we had a pretty full calendar of professional development events. On Tuesday, our professional development day, we also have a day prior to the start of the school year, and there's also a day we call halftime, which occurs at the mid-year point. But in addition to that, there's ongoing events, not only at the individual schools, but on the early release days that we hold throughout the year, there are eight of those. So all of those together, what we've done is we've developed a system where we can record those professional development opportunities and the record-keeping around the points issued for that, all with an X2, which is a system we already own as a result of our contract, so no, there's no additional cost with that. With respect to the last item, the safety and awareness training, we've done Alice training, which is basically lockdown and security training. In addition, through some of our other contracts, we do online training with Google Classroom for civil rights and equity training. The state provides some training around the ethics portion, which is available online. And in addition to that, our food service provider, Witsen's, does HACCP and food safety training as part of their contract, so there really isn't any additional cost associated with that. The one item that there is some cost with this year that the superintendent has invested in is the RBT training, which is evaluated training for our administrators, and it's one of the key points of our evaluation system that we're going forward with. So there was some cost associated with having that professional development opportunity come in.
I understand, you know, the professional development for those who are actually going to be doing the evaluation, that is certainly needed, in the fact that, well, it is really needed for fairness. So with that, there is no additional cost except for, but the cost, are the faculty, the administrators participating in that, are they paid extra to participate? Or is this just for paying someone to come in to provide that information?
So no, it is, the cost associated that I mentioned earlier was for the company to come in and deliver that professional development. One of the things that we were able to do through the negotiations with Dr. Malone, as well as with the assistance of the committee for approving the contract and the FRAA, was that we negotiated additional time in the monthly professional development obligation for administrators, and we're also doing it with some creative scheduling, where we're doing some half-days and some early-release days where we're having them come in and do that. So the RBT, there is no additional cost associated at this point with any stipends or any additional time for administrators. That's all taking place within the schedule.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Coogan.
I think there's a wealth of good data in this report, that if you dug a little bit deeper and you went to the DESE website, for the first time in 2018, our teacher retention rate went over 85%. We had constantly been in the mid-to-high 70s. Last year's report indicated we kept 86.6% of our teachers. If you look at the reduction in the evaluations over the last five years, needs improvement for our professional teachers has gone from 14% to 3%, and I attribute a lot of that to the professional development that Mr. Martins was asking about. If these numbers are going trending the way they are according to, as Mr. Martin says, the DESE data, this district, within the last five years, has made significant moves to strengthen their teaching staff, to retain their teaching staff, and our evaluation number, from my look at it, from what I did, was for the first time, we were over 95% of all staff evaluated, and the state average is 94%. For years, we wallowed around in the 70s and the 75%, and now we're above the state average. So for one time, Fall River can say we're doing better than the state average. Traditionally, the target is something a little below. I think that the movements that have gone on with my colleagues on the school committee, the administrative staff in the district, the teachers in the district, targeted professional development has improved our teacher retention, our teacher evaluations have all gone up in the proficient and exemplary areas. I think we're moving in the right direction. The data is reflective of that. A lot of times, we hang our hats on the negative data, but when I was reviewing all this today, I was extremely pleased with the trends I saw in this report, and I think it's a compliment to everybody on this stage, everybody that works in a school in Fall River, and our administrative team that are out in those schools evaluating those teachers. And my hat's off to everything I've read here. Am I saying it's perfect? Absolutely not. There's still areas to work on, but I believe this is trending in the right direction, and I was very, very pleased and privileged to be part of this committee when you're looking at numbers like that. So I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Coogan, well, first, my colleague, Mr. Coogan, then this Mr. Coogan, I want to say I completely agree with my colleague, Mr. Coogan. The only thing I'd like to see the district improve on, and I know we had given it some thought, but now that I'm looking at this in comparison to, like districts, you know, the diversified staff that we have now, the diversification of staff we have now, I'd like to see, you know, us become closer to the state average when it comes to, you know, particularly some of the subgroups we're seeing a large increase in numbers in our district, the Hispanic population. You know, when I look at Fall River, it's a little over 2% of our educators, if I'm reading this correct, are Hispanic, yet when you look at New Bedford, 5.62% of their staff are. And so if you look at the state average, it's a little over 4%. So I'm wondering, what is it that New Bedford's doing, because I'm sure they have a comparable, diversified student body in terms of, I mean, excuse me, staffing that we do here? And so I'm not really sure why educators are trending towards New Bedford, but I'd like to see our staff become, you know, to mirror the population that we're serving. And if we're having an increase in Hispanic population of students, I'd like to see us try to go out and actively recruit individuals who mirror the students they're teaching. I'm not saying that we're doing a bad job, I'd just like to see, of all the stuff that we're talking about, retention rate, we're making those marks now, our educator evaluations are coming in far better than they are now. I think the next step is to take a look at the demographics in our district and try to mirror the adults and the educators who are in the classrooms with our population. And so I'm not sure if you have any comments to that, but it just seems like New Bedford's almost, you know, 2.5% more than we are, you know, here in terms of their staffing, and I'm not sure what that's attributed to.
So, I mean, it's easy to point fingers at things like money, so I don't want to just take the easy answer on that, but that was part of the reason for including that salary comparisons down at the bottom of the page. One of the things that we're also doing through the Joint Labor Committee that was set up in our FREA negotiations is that we're looking at some of those factors, and a questionnaire or a review of the hiring process when it comes to those types of things. The second thing that I tried to do was not only take a cross-section of those local communities in terms of that, and obviously, New Bedford's got a little bit of a jump on us in the areas of diversity, but in general, we've moved the needle from where we were three years ago, and in the full report, which I included some other, I looked at the average over the last three years. So I think we're up from where we were three years ago, or over the last three years. So we are making some progress, the needle is moving, but we certainly have some work to do in that area.
Absolutely. And you can see that we've actually made some progress in the last three years. I'm just pointing to the fact that we're below the state average, and we're below an average of a district that's comparable to us, not too far down the road from us. You know, and we've had these conversations before, and money may be a contributing factor, but we knew when we did our own assessment of why people are leaving Fall River, it wasn't just for money. There were a number of issues that people were leaving when we studied the retention rates here. Money, actually, believe it or not, I think was, if I remember correctly, like third or fourth on our list. It wasn't even the one or two reasons, the number one or two reasons why people weren't staying in Fall River, but we've addressed retention now, and I think we've done that through the type of professional development, and I think the cooperation now that educators feel with their building principles and with this committee and with administration, I think we're all working better together, and I think that's contributing to people staying here. All I'd like to see is us keep an eye on that piece, and if there are viable candidates out there who can meet the needs of this district, that we look at the population we serve and try to match up individuals who sort of mirror what the district looks like.
The only other thing I would like to point out to the committee, and I referenced it in the appendix that was at the back of the full report, not the PowerPoint section, but the other one, is a report that studies the labor pool in the area, and it's, I didn't print it, I tried to spare you that, it's about 120 pages in that report, but it's got some great data in there on trends, not only within the labor pool in general, but specifically in the educational labor pool, and some of the factors that are being faced by districts that are competing for that pool of diverse candidates. So I would suggest that if you want more information on that, that there's a pretty good dive that you can do in that report, but it is pretty dense. It's about 125 pages, I believe.
Yeah, I think it's a multi-prong issue, and I don't think you're going to have one solution that's going to answer the question, but I would just ask, is the head of HR, that you take a look at those things?
Absolutely.
When we're doing recruitment, when we're out there, when we're talking with colleagues from other districts, how are they recruiting individuals that meet the needs of their district, the representation of the people, of the students they serve? How are they doing it? And if they're doing it a particular way that we're not, you know, let's consider doing it that way, if it's going to increase the number of individuals who are qualified to do that job. Thank you, Mr. Coogan. This is an excellent report, does have a lot of good information in it, and I agree, and I won't jump on all of the comments that Mr. Coogan made, but, you know, I think this district has come a long way in the last few years in terms of, you know, turning the ship, or riding the ship, if you will, when it comes to retention. Fall River was a pass-through, and now we're seeing more people actually sticking around. I know one of the things we looked at, when we're doing a district capacity project, was the number of educators that were leaving, years one through three, and then I think it was like three to five, and we found that once people were here for, I think it was 10 years or more, they tend to stay here. It was the newer teachers that were coming and going, and we're trying to wrap our heads around, why was that? And I know they did the survey that resulted in a list of things that contributed to it. I didn't see it in here, and if it is, I apologize, but at some point, I'd like to see, of the 85% of teachers that are staying now, what year in service are they now? Are we getting, are we impacting more newer educators to our district than they're deciding to stay? Or are we still just building upon the teachers that have been here for a while?
So one of the things that we currently have, not only through our new software, which is Teach Point, which can give you a lot of great analytical data, in addition to that, we have, we're creating some reports in X2, which will show the distribution across time in service within the district, and we can get that information to the committee.
Yeah, I just think it's helpful. I mean, if we're actually retaining a higher percentage of students in there, I mean, excuse me, of teachers, of educators, and they're those within their first several years of teaching, then that's something I think we should be really celebrating, because that was a subgroup that we found were exiting the quickest in our district, and if we're holding on to them longer, then I think that's a win for the district, because not only we're increasing teacher retention, but it's of the newer educators who are staying here longer, which tells me that it's probably attributed to better PD, more stability in the district, less pink slips when it comes to budgets, a better relationship between the union and the leadership team. Those are all signs of a healthy district, and so I'd just be curious to see if we've made an impact in that area or not, or are we still retaining those teachers that have decided to stay here and set up shop and have been here for 10 years or more? Because that still doesn't cut to the problem of why we're losing good...
Recruiting and retention.
Correct. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Mr. Agnew.
Couple of quick questions. The HR audit that was done, does this deal with all of the issues or recommendations from the HR audit, or are there still things outstanding? I would say there are still a few things outstanding. There are some issues that are a little bit longer-term, you know, analysis and attack. One of the issues that they seemed to mention at the beginning of the report was staffing levels within HR, and currently, we're keeping up fine, and we did add one position this year through the development of the HR coordinator, and that assisted us great with the evaluation curve. So I think we're still in good shape with respect to most of it. I'd be glad to give you a comparison of what the key findings were, and then, you know... Yeah, if there's things outstanding, if you could just get it to us. Certainly. One that sticks out for me was the recruitment plan. I know you get some embedded within here. Right. It seemed like they articulated a need for a, either like a one-page or a 10-step recruitment plan. In addition to a calendar, and that's in development as well. So I think that's something that should be here already, just in my opinion. That report was a long time ago, so I think that would be one that's important. We don't have a job fairs here anymore. Is that on purpose, or? Well, one of the issues we ran into with the way we were running the job fair before was that the budget cycle fell so far behind the job fair. So we would do the recruiting, but then we couldn't offer because we didn't have the budget in place yet. With the current budget and calendar, we're actually getting ahead of that. Last year, we did a much better job of jumping out early and making earlier hires. So one of the things that we're looking at for the spring is, does it make sense to, once we've got the budget calendar finalized, to go ahead and do a job fair as close to the hiring season as possible, that we can go ahead and get that done? That makes sense. The, not really a question, more of a comment, the overall completion rate for evaluations, I know we say that it's going up, which it has, but just as one member, I really don't find any reason why we don't have 100% of our people, other than an illness and somebody's out on leave. I really don't think there's any reason, especially for administrators, to not have 100% of evaluations done. I just, I don't see that being, there really is, other than illness, I can't see a good reason why, and if it's not happening, that shows somewhat of incompetence amongst them, and there should, you know, there should be actions accordingly. So that's just an editorial comment that I want to make. And to the point of why we're retaining more people, I want to give kudos to the superintendent, current administration. The prior administration, the bottom line, the fact of the matter is, is that administrators were told, your school scores stink, so therefore you have to make your people needs improvement for the first three years. And all that was, was like, you know, kicking people while they were busting their butt for the district, and I think that changed, and that changed for the better, because people are working hard, and by consistently just making people needs improvement, it's like kicking them when they're down, and that's not going to help. I know that's changed, I've heard it, heard it when I was running, and I do see the numbers reflect that, so kudos to the superintendent and his team for giving people a fair shake and doing that, and I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Corey.
Yeah, Mr. Coogan, I want to praise you on a great report. I was very pleased going through the report, the items, and of course, because I'm a retired worker in this district, have a lot of insight, and I'm really pleased to see retention levels, you know, improving, because just a short 10 years ago, I remember that in the math department at Dershowitz alone, there was a revolving door. There were people just coming in and going out. Things were in a shambles, and that's been stabilized and improved, and so we all know that this is hard work and that it's incremental work. It can never be done in big portions all at once. It's step-by-step and with a steady hand. As far as recruitment is concerned, I'm very pleased to see that School Spring is working. I was unaware of such technology, but I'm really glad that applicants can attach their portfolios and that those portfolios can be revisited, and so that we can try to get the very best candidates possible. Thinking out of the box and thinking alongside my colleague, Mr. Coogan, over here, a few years back, we talked about some out-of-the-box thinking about recruiting teachers down here and maybe using local realtors, you know, to help them find housing and really great apartments, and to set up a support system for the young teaching candidates coming out of Bridgewater or wherever, Rhode Island College, or UMass, or any of the great schools, and there are so many great schools in Massachusetts, turning out great teaching candidates, and unfortunately, a lot of them go to where the money is. You know, they might go north, but they're not coming south enough, but I think that tune is changing, and whatever we could do by creating a support system for them, a scaffolding system to bring in new recruits, then I say, let's do it. And I'm really pleased with School Spring. As far as demographics, I've done a lot of work in my career around tolerance and ethnic diversity, and I respect the diversity levels we have within our staff here in the Fall River Public Schools. I know that we're not meeting the state average. The state average, I guess, schools in Boston would be twice as diverse as ours, that's okay, we're building up, but I do know this, I do know that if we continue to work toward hiring diversity in our staff, I know that it's going to have direct implications on the relations with the students, because students would absolutely adhere to their own kind in a cultural sense, and that education would flow a little bit more smoothly if we can continue to develop the diversity amongst our staff. I'm very, Fall River is a greatly diverse city, and, you know, it's been mostly the white demographic to a huge degree for a long, long time, and the white demographic is still very predominant, but the African-American demographic and the Hispanic and Asian demographic are all growing, and as long as we can keep our eyes on the prize to bring in more staff along those lines, I think it would help... I think would help our district immensely moving down the road. But I'm very pleased to see and understand that we're already moving in that area. And to echo my colleague, Mr. Aguirre's comments, as far as professional development is concerned, I know that central, central staff works really, really hard on building great programs for professional development. I was at Convocation this year. I was greatly impressed, and so was everybody else that was there. There was a high morale in the room. And I know that from a short five years ago to where we're at now, that there's been a lot of morale building in the district. And Convocation and the halftime professional development, which I also attended last year, was just simply excellent to see the level of enthusiasm amongst our educators, and to see that they're being supported, and to see that they're being listened to, and to see that they're mingling, there's a whole lot of mingling going on, the barriers are being broken. Everybody's working really hard, that's to be acknowledged. We're asking everybody to work hard, but I want the public to know that morale right now in our district is very high, and everybody's working hard to give in order to improve their classrooms, improve relations with students, and I'm very pleased with the staff right now. It'll never be perfect, but overall, I just want to say, from a human resources point of view, great job, and keep it up. With that, I yield.
Thank you. I wanna echo the same comments, you know, very important, the facts are the facts. Just a few short years ago, as the vice chair said, and I think is very aware of, because he was here for most of that time fighting against pink slips going into our youngest teachers or our newest teachers, and that is all stemming from the relationship between the school department and the city, the mayor's office and the city council. So, a few short years ago, when you had the superintendent fighting the mayor, fighting the city council, not meeting net school spending, it just was not a good scenario for anybody. And that is directly relating to the results, I think, in this report. It reflects that over the last several years, the school district has improved, the morale has improved, as you've heard from some of my colleagues, and the teachers are more comfortable in our district, more comfortable now under this leadership than ever before. So, I want to thank the committee for continuing to make sure that both the city, the city council, and the school department are doing what they need to do to keep our teachers happy and moving the city forward. And that's really important. If you don't have that relationship, if you don't have that foundation, if you don't have the financial fiscal house in order on the city side, none of this is possible either. And if you have that continuous fight, that's not gonna, that's not gonna benefit our school district. So, I'm happy of the results that this administration has achieved, along with the superintendent and the school committee, and the results show. The facts are the facts. Thank you. Thank you. Other questions? No? Thank you, Mr. Coogan.
Thank you.
Okay, hopefully, we can slide right through these next several items. They're mostly just vote to approve, so I'm gonna ask for those motions to be made as we go through, unless there is a pressing question.
I'd like to, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to amend the language. I'd like to make a motion.
Motion.
Be amended language here on bullet number one. I just wanna reference the instrument lessons, the way we have it written now. Physical education classes shall not be withheld from students for such remedial work as interventions, tutoring, instrument lessons, or academic makeup work. Instrument lessons are not remedial, so I'd like to recommend that we reword that, to physical education shall not be withheld from students for such remedial work as interventions, tutoring, and other academic work, or for instrument lessons.
It's been amended in the form of a motion and has been seconded. All in favor?
Comment, comment?
Yes.
Just, I looked at the document that was sent out today with some language. The language that the superintendent has, has the instrument lessons in it.
He just wants to reframe it. It makes sense what he's suggesting. It's just a rewording, it's a reframing, it's moving those three words into another part of the sentence.
But in essence, it's the same comment.
It is, but it isn't, because it could be misconstrued that instrument lessons are a form of intervention. Here, instrument lessons are just a separate enrichment period.
So, the recommendation from you, Mr. Superintendent, says phys ed classes shall not be withheld from students for such remedial work as interventions, tutoring, instrument lessons, or academic makeup work. And how is it?
Well, read it, the remedial work, shall not be withheld for remedial work as interventions, tutoring, and other academic work, or for instrument lessons.
I mean, it doesn't really matter to me, it's the same thing, I think it's the same thing.
It's the same thing, it's an English, what do they call it?
It's, I get it, it's just, it's aggravating already, that's, that's all. I yield.
Let's vote for it.
The motion has been made and seconded. Roll call, please, on the amendment.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Motion to accept as a second read?
Motion to accept as a second read has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
What is the vote on now?
This is to, to a second read, to a second read.
But then, it's gonna be official, we're done with this?
Yep.
All right, yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Correa?
Yes. Item number three is discussion, vote to approve the RFP internet access for 2019 to 2023. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Hi, discussion?
Mr. Martins.
On section 2.3, point D. It's a special construction payment plan option. Is there any additional fiber optic installation costs for us?
On this new network, all the construction will be done by the, you know, the selected vendor, and it'll be buried into the cost either on a monthly basis or on a one-time cost upfront. There's two options how that can be. Either way, we're paying for it, yes, but...
But this is for... This is coming out of E-rate, correct?
It's coming out of, 90% of the funding will come from E-rate, and the other 10% comes out of our budget.
Okay. Now, but in here, it says that the applicant, going back to 3D, the applicant requests that the respondents consider allowing applicant to pay for non-discount share of special construction cost. I guess that's what I'm driving at. Is there, and this is going, if you have the fiber optic already installed, there is no additional cost. Is that correct?
Well, this is written, right now, we have Comcast as our vendor.
Okay.
In the event that Comcast submits a proposal and wins again through the process, there may not be as much or any special construction costs. Just to back up one second, basically, right now, the best way to explain, our network that connects all 17-hour buildings to the internet, right now, it's like the size of a drinking straw. We're looking to upgrade it to the size of a garden hose, and then maybe after this five years is up, we may have to go to a pool hose. And after that, I won't care, 'cause I'll be retired. No, not too much, all right.
I like that.
I don't, I don't know if it's, I get, right now...
Right now.
We have fiber optic cable.
Right now, we have fiber from Comcast, but it's at a 1-gig connection speed, that over the next five years, we expect that to not be sufficient for many of our buildings. So, we're looking for proposals for the next five years. This is really a request for you to approve, me to go forward to the city council to request a five-year contract because of the savings of the, by going to five years over three years. And the city council will have to approve a five-year contract for us to go out for, so I can reap the benefits of the savings on our end, as well as the government's end.
Are you stating that the fiber optics currently employed will be insufficient for...
The next five years, yes, I'm saying that, in many of our building, yes.
That the, insufficient, not, that you, we're gonna have to rewire? Is that what you're telling me?
I'm looking to go upgrade to a bigger connection, yes. Schools like Durfee, many of our middle schools, and many of our bigger elementary schools, as we add on more, more computers, more online testing for the MCAS, and also more of our content in the classroom is now high-def video quality streaming, the bandwidth and the connection speeds, whether it's the straw, the garden hose, or the pool hose, is going to be insufficient to meet those needs. So, I have to sort of plan for where we are right now, as well as going forward over the next five years. And this is written to be scaled, that I can start out with going for 1-gig to say, like a 5-gig connection at Durfee, and then at the end of the five years, maybe we go to the 10-gig connection, which is, you know, extremely robust. So, I'm sort of playing this, that what we have now, a school like a Tansy, the 1-gig connection I have now may be sufficient for the next 10 years, because of the number of students in the school, and, you know, bandwidth projections for those schools. But other schools may not be. So, that's why I'm playing, we need to go out for a proposal for a new network, a new proposal anyways, and I'm recommending we go out for new connections to all of the buildings that are more robust and can handle more, for all those reasons that I mentioned over the next five years.
Okay, could you tell me what the, this isn't, it's anticipated cost of each year is $600,000 per year?
The anticipated cost is, on the low end, probably $600,000, based on the, I'm just estimating what our current costs are right now, that going forward, it could be $600,000, it could be a few hundred thousand more than that. We're gonna pay 10% of that portion.
I understand, and I greatly appreciate E-rays.
Of course.
You know, they're, you know, they're, but I'm trying to get a, you know, a handle of just what is our costs?
Our costs, right now, we're paying about $55,000 out of our budget.
Okay.
I expect to pay 55 to 75 over the next five years per year.
Then let's go back a little bit.
Yep.
And the fact that, I can understand that, we're paying 10%, no problem. But that doesn't include, that does not include rewiring, if it's required, if it's necessary.
This is going to, if a new vendor is selected, say Verizon gets selected as a new vendor, they're gonna go and either put cabling in the streets, they may have conduit already that has the cabling in the streets, or they're gonna do it aero-ly through, you know, like wires on the poles, and they'll do the fiber connection, that'll be a 10-gig connection versus a 1-gig connection that's already there from Comcast. They'll do that wiring, and they will charge us a cost for that one-time construction that can either be done one time in year one, I'm asking in that section D to say, to allow me the option of paying it in four installments over four years, or most likely, most vendors that have a lot of E-rate business, they just bury it right into the cost of the monthly cost over the term of the 48 to 60-month term that I'm seeking in the five-year or four-year proposal.
So, the approximate cost of $60,000 per year, which is the 10%, our 10%?
Yeah.
But should there be additional wiring and stuff of this nature, that's not going to be 60,000, it's gonna be more?
I expect it to be 60,000 for the first year, in that range, as we go forward, we do every year, we've done this for every year that I've been around. We will sit down and look at usage by school, usage as a district, and things that are coming out in terms of software we're gonna buy, whether it's Edgenuity, or MCAS is now gonna go from one grade in the school to all grades, and we'll make a projection on the bandwidth we'll need. I have to plan for the bandwidth for the worst day in a year, and buy and plan accordingly. So, for example, next Wednesday, when we have the Pep Valley streaming to all the schools, that's a good example for us to use as how the bandwidth affects each of our schools, because it'll be a high video depth streamed into multiple classrooms throughout each school. We'll use it as a gauge to see how that affected our bandwidth and our circuits. But going forward, for the next five years, what we have now will not be sufficient for most of our schools, and that's why I'm seeking a new proposal that will increase and add in new fiber that will take us through the next five years.
Okay. I can appreciate that. I certainly understand the bandwidth requirements and the speed. I certainly appreciate those. When I see something of 10% of, say, $60,000, then, and over a five-year period of time, what's coming up? And that's what I'm concerned about, is what is coming up?
And as I've done for the last several years, especially now with the zero-based budget, I've put that line of what we're gonna pay into my budget, that, in the MIS budget, of what my internet access will be, what my bandwidth will be, and as well as my other costs, as well as E-rate projects for internal connections. Now, E-rate has allowed us to upgrade every one of our buildings, either in the last four years or coming up in this current year, to modernize all the equipment in the last five years, as well as additionally modernize all the wireless equipment to be the most, you know, modern and high-speed wireless in our classrooms to support a classroom of 30 kids using 30 devices, if not more, with bringing on the technology that a kid may have at the high school, a laptop that they're using, as well as their phone for, in a classroom. So, we've been planning on this, every five years, we're refreshing things, and this is another example of refreshing technology projections and needs is by going out for this new network. Either way we're doing it, we have to go out to a new proposal, because this one is ending after this, end of this school year, the third year will be up, so we have to seek a new proposal. And seeking the same solution of 1-gig, you know, the drinking straw, is not gonna be sufficient for most of the schools, so we're doing the five-year to save money on the overall cost by going to the 10-gig connection, or up to a 10-gig connection in each of the schools. That'll be scalable, every year, we'll review that, and then we'll apply for what we think we're gonna need. So, we're not gonna go ask for all 10 gigs in every school at once, it'll be, as we go through each year's review, we'll decide what we think we'll need, and just get more than what we think we're gonna need just to cover ourselves. So...
All right, I'm not gonna go any further. I understand that there will be additional costs.
Yes, there will be.
Okay.
But internet is more, this is important now as electricity, I mean, that is...
Oh, of course it is.
So, what we're paying, it's, it's a...
As long as it's, you know, on the record, there's going to be additional costs, that's what I'm after.
There will be, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. I yield.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Correa?
Yes. Number four is a vote to approve the FY '20 budget calendar. Is there a motion? Motion to approve has been made, is there a second?
Second with a question.
With a question, Mr. Aguirre.
Just a, either a question or a request, or the joint meeting with the city council, I would like to request that that get pushed up before the meeting on the draft operating budget, because I think it's important to get everybody on the same page, council, mayor, school committee, before we actually do a draft operating budget. So, it's just a request, I think it would make sense to push it before we actually have a draft operating budget. When it's two days before we have to submit the budget, I think people will be scrambling to try and figure out what's going on. So, that's just a request. I yield, thank you.
Mr. Mel, maybe you have a comment?
The charter states 75 days before year-end, so prior to April 15th, it can be any, any time, any time prior to that.
Yep.
That's why we wrote prior to.
Yeah, I'm just saying, prior to, if we can make that prior to, before the draft operating would make sense.
It's also, this always gets complicated with the state timeline as well. So, we'll, we'll work with the committee on getting all that set up.
These numbers will be very preliminary, based on the governor's budget, I assume, again.
Right.
And they do what we can. Okay, seconded, roll call, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Correa?
So, the four quadrants are the leadership, shared responsibility and professional collaboration, school climate and culture, intentional practices for improving instruction and student-specific supports, and instruction to all students. Now, I do recognize you probably need a magnifying glass to see these, but I know how much we love one-pagers. Basically, the question was what are we doing to turn around our scores? So what I did is, in those four quadrants, I gave an overview of just what each of those items are that we have engaged in last year and moving forward. On the backside of this form, we have been working with a strategic team from DESI that outlines the timeline for our six schools that are in the lowest 10%. The top part are those schools that have already written an engagement plan or a redesign plan, and the bottom is for the four schools that are engaged in that process right now. So it's, like I said, it's comprehensive, but I just wanted to address what we are doing. I am very happy to hear that many of you got to get out to the professional development that happened last Tuesday. I couldn't be more excited for the work that's going on. I can't say that we're happy with the results, but we are happy with what the work we're doing and the way that we're moving.
Thank you.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yeah, I want to praise you, Dr. Carlson, for the level of work that's going on. We talked about this in subcommittee last week, and I know for a fact that all of your principals and vice principals and other administrators are working their tails off, but I especially want to note that the teachers are working so hard in all of their classrooms throughout the district, in that you can look at numbers in a black-and-white way, but I choose to look at the gray matter in between. And I believe that our teachers are working really, really, really hard to eradicate the gray matter in their classrooms, because there are issues affecting each district that are unique, and that idiosyncratic to each district. And Fall River has its issues, demographically, economically, any way you want to say, but I believe that through the professional development and through the morale building and through the buy-in that I've, that I'm witnessing myself in a lot of my school visits, I'm very impressed with the progress that I see going on. Again, it's incremental. We're not going to make huge gains all at once, but the hard work goes into that incremental growth. And I want to take a moment to praise you for that. Thank you very much. I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Coogan?
I just got a couple of quick comments. We heard this in the instructional subcommittee, and it was my fault. We didn't vote to move it to the full committee, but it was a very comprehensive report. I believe things are being done differently than they were in the past. I think we can do better, but I believe with our human resources and our instructional committees working together, we're definitely going to be seeing a bump in those scores. And we'll all say a prayer together. I yield.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Question, comment?
Comment. Mr. Aguirre?
Just a comment and suggestion, I think, to the superintendent. At the meeting, we talked about a lot of different things, but one that struck me that I think is very important is the retirees that were able to, last year, come into the schools to help with the interventions. I believe it was at the Henry Lord School. And I know, I know money's tight, but I would personally like to see that not only there, but across the district. So possibly, I don't know if the plans are in place, but if not, if we could get a report on the options for that, and if you need help finding money in the budget, just let me know. I'll be glad to come up with a couple of line items for you.
Sure.
Thank you. I just think it's an important, I just think it's an important piece, and
Wait a second. Here you go, right now.
I do think it's an important piece that I didn't want to let go, because it was very much, it was very much a, the part of the meeting that struck me, that that's something that we should do if we can immediately, and let's try and find some money for that.
So it's a strategy that we've done here, but that I'm also very familiar with when I was in Brockton. It works. It's at a cheaper rate than traditional interventionists, and we get the expertise of people we know. So it's something that we believe in, and it's just figuring out how to do more of it.
But we're doing it some?
Small scale, but yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I yield. Thank you.
Good evening. I agree with my colleagues with regards to the work that the teachers are doing and administrators are doing. I sincerely do believe that, that they're working very hard and should be commended for their work, absolutely. But the results are the results. Now, what are we going to do about it? And I brought this up. You know, there is, you have a district turnaround, this is material you passed out at the subcommittee, although not a member of that subcommittee, I was present. The district turnaround model, when you mentioned about the four steps or the four levels, I've seen the document, the pyramid there, for quite a few years already in there, and it's not much of a change of what we're currently doing. When you go on to learning walks, if I'm not mistaken, learning walks started with America's Choice somewhere around 10 years ago, I guess, somewhere in this vicinity, in there. And you also, you passed out a rubric, I guess, for conducting of a learning walk. Learning walks are supposed to be a snapshot of what's going on in the classroom, not any formal evaluation. I don't know what individual teachers feel about learning walks, but they're not supposed to be intimidating. Let me ask a question. Do your learning walkers bring this into a classroom?
We do, and that's a great question. Actually, those were sentiments that I actually shared. So what we did before we started this school year is we partnered with the president of the teachers' union and collectively with the Joint Labor Management Committee co-chair, Keith Michon at Cuss Middle School. And what we did is we put a joint letter to all Fall River Public School staff members, so teachers, administrators, to let everyone know the purpose of a learning walk. So learning walks are not evaluative. It's just to collect information. And I apologize, Mr. Aguirre, but to really kind of monitor alignment, to make sure what we say we're doing is actually happening. It's not looking at teacher practice necessarily, and that specific teacher. It is looking at practice holistically across the district. So what we wanted to do is we wanted to be very transparent with our teachers and let them know upfront. Mrs. Cusick also set up some time so that her building union leaders could bring any concerns to her, and to this point, we've had zero. Teachers have been very open. We asked if they have examples of work that's going on in their class. We can collect it so that we can give really detailed feedback to the schools. And I have to say, across the board, we have been very successful. As for America's Choice, Mr. Martins, I am from Hawaii, as you know. America's Choice was the first outside educational partner that Hawaii brought in. But prior to America's Choice, we were doing learning walks. I think you can call them all different types of thing, but it is really about monitoring and making sure what we are trying to implement is happening within the schools.
I'm, I don't know if I'm pleased or surprised that people, teachers, are ecstatic about this document walking into a classroom. I would tend to think that that would be quite judgmental, I guess, in that, oh my goodness, what is he or she, the learning walker, writing down?
So that's in our letter to all teachers. That's exactly what we pointed out, exactly the purpose and what we would be doing. If you notice on the sheet, there are no teacher names. We don't collect teacher names of any walks. Therefore, it's not evaluative. That's not the purpose. We're not going in to look at the teacher, but environment, instructional strategies, and results and outcomes. So it is a collection tool. I was surprised we didn't have any pushback, but I think sometimes when you're very upfront and you share the purpose before you go in, there's kind of a flip. And to date, we haven't had any pushback. I can't say that that's always going to be the case, but if there is an instance where we do receive pushback, we'll evaluate, we'll reconvene with all the different members of the collective bargaining, and we'll definitely make adjustments as needed.
If they're satisfied with it, then I'm satisfied with it.
Great.
But the only thing is that, you know, when I looked at this, I said, oh, boy. You know, it's very intimidating to have someone come in, a group. You normally have about five workers.
We try, I'm not very comfortable when we have large groups, so when we do our district instructional walks, we try to do about three people max per team, just so that we're not as intrusive. And we also try to be very cognizant of time of day. So if we're going into maybe a special education behavioral class, we might not want to go right before lunch. So we do try to be very thoughtful of the walks, and we do meet with the principals, and they kind of give us a heads-up of what would be the best classes to visit on those days.
I participated in several learning walks in another school system, and it was such that one person spoke with the teacher, another person would speak with a student. Just, okay, what are you doing? And, do you understand what's happening here? Very friendly. And then you meet out in the car, and you discuss what you saw, what I saw, for five minutes. I don't know how long your learning walks are, but if they're happy with it, then that's Some of the calls that I have gotten, when you say teachers are happy, and you're thinking about department heads and coaches, some of the comments that I have received is, like, if one of the coaches teaches a class, if they're so good, why don't they have a assigned class if they're so great? And some of the negative comments was that they're, in some cases, not all cases, but some cases, administrative snitches. I'm sorry, but that's what some of the calls that I received.
Well, that's one, that's a good point, Mr. Martins. I've also heard that. It's one of the indicators on the evaluation rubric, which is why we are very excited that the majority of those classes taught were by coaches, since they are the experts in their content area. So our PD has really been focused around our building coaches and department heads actually delivering professional development, so being the teacher for our teachers.
You use TestWiz
Yes.
in there. And one of the problems that's indicated here, that benchmarks are created in district without test experts, without test experts. Wouldn't you think that the teachers teaching the class are an expert in the determining just what it is that needs to be done within that particular classroom?
I think that would be very difficult to say. I can just say that we, all of our curriculum maps were written by teachers, because, yes, we want to have the experts, but test creation is a whole different ballgame. In fact, it's not something that I've ever trained in. To align to the common core, to align to the mass frameworks, to align to the standards is a very detailed task. I feel very fortunate that we have some amazing people in this district, but it is extremely time-consuming, and we were not paying people above and beyond their job, which it was teaching in schools. So a lot of people were volunteering their time. And I can't recall, I think when I talked to Kevin, TestWiz has been here more than 15 years. It is not a, it doesn't simulate the testing environment that we need our students to practice in, because it is online now. So there are a lot of problems with TestWiz, absolutely, but I do believe that our teachers should be planning and being prepared to teach, not creating tests.
Well, I'm glad you said that, because now, you know, in everything, as I sat through that meeting, and I've read this material several times, one thing that doesn't seem to be present is the fact that you have an average, what, 26 students in a classroom, especially in the elementary grades, somewhere around there, and that, how can that teacher be able to get to every single one of those kids? All of this here, very nice, but it doesn't answer the question, as to how is that teacher going to get to all of those kids? In my view, those teachers need additional help in the classroom. Now, I know that you have people that are, I don't know what it's called, specialists?
Interventionists?
Interventionists are in there, but they're not in there for the entire class. At least, that's not what I'm being told. They certainly, you have some behavioral problems. Wouldn't it be nice, we had 31 students here this evening, doing extremely well on the current state testing, maxed it out, fantastic. Wouldn't it be nice if every single classroom, all 26 kids in every single classroom, were like that? That'd be utopia, wouldn't it?
Well, as a former special education teacher and a teacher at heart, I would say absolutely if we could have extra adults, but I would say above that, that there are adults that need to be trained in not only the content, but the types of classrooms that they're in. I, I think that one great thing is we opened up the summer professional development to paraprofessionals, and this Tuesday, we required the paraprofessionals attended the training, which is a start. So I would say yes, but I think it definitely depends on, are we training people to be prepared and giving them tools that they need to be successful at all times?
Okay. I'm not going to change your mind, and you're not going to change my mind.
We can debate it later.
Absolutely so. But the only thing is, I gave you the graph, okay? And I'll make a comment to you next year, the year after, okay? Let's go and mimic that graph. If it goes up by 10%, I'll buy you dinner.
I'll take you up on that. And I have very expensive taste, Mr. Martins.
I'm sorry?
I have very expensive taste.
That's all right. Venus de Milo has, you know, you get the three-pound lobster. It's quite expensive, so no problem, okay?
Look forward to it.
In there.
Speaking of dinner.
But nevertheless, okay. I'm sorry, but without having additional trained paraprofessionals in the classrooms that are in need, if that's not going to happen, then you're not going to get those scores up to where you'd like it to be. I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Joubey Brief, and I want to thank the instructional subcommittee for taking on the task. I know at the last school committee meeting, the presentation was given to us by Dr. Curley, so obviously we saw where the district was in terms of our progress, or in some cases, lack of progress. And so the task was to have the administration come before the subcommittee to explain, how do we address that issue? And so I'm glad that that's happened. I've read the material. Not only did I read the material, but I also took up superintendent, and I, and I thank him for it, and thank also the Watson and Talbot staff, went on, I don't know if it wasn't a learning walk, I guess, and if it was, I was learning, and visited the Watson School. And I was thinking about it after I left there. We didn't start at the principal's office when we walked in that building, which is, which I thought was odd, but I was a guest, so I was just following the superintendent. We immediately went and started to visit classrooms. And so my observations in those classrooms were the teachers, one, weren't intimidated by us being there, superintendent or school committee member. In many cases, it was like we weren't even there. It didn't seem like they missed a beat. The teachers kept teaching, students kept following, whatever the lesson was, they were doing their work. I was able to watch and observe firsthand the differentiated instruction. So teachers were working with students who I presumed, and I think superintendent had explained to me, were students that may have been struggling more than others, and there was a small group working with the teacher. There were others working independently, and there were others working together. And just watching that dynamic, they didn't care if the superintendent and I were in the room. They knew what they needed to get accomplished, and they were doing it. And so I watched that in a number of classes. I counted the number of students in one particular class, and teacher had complete control, and there were, I think, 27, 26, 27, unless I missed one or two, and no other additional support in that classroom, yet learning was occurring. And I know that because the superintendent was asking students as we walked through, what is it that you're doing? What are you trying to identify? And they were easily able to articulate what they were working on. And so as I did that, we watched not only classroom instruction, we watched lunch, we went out and watched recess, and then we finished up our visit with a stop to the principal's office. And it wasn't until that time that I think the principal even realized we were in the class, we were in her building, which again is odd. I come from a culture where you had to make a phone call to the ad building, let the superintendent know you were coming, when you were coming, where you were going, and the purpose for it. And so it was a great experience, and we finished up. And when we knocked on the door, I think you were meeting with, was it the I L T?
We had just completed a learning walk, actually, so the entire I L T.
Right. So the leadership team was in there talking about the instruction and what was going on. And another thing that sort of was an eye-opener for me is that each person in that room had a task, a specific task, whether it was a grade level, and everybody around the room was there, working to address what we all have concerns about. And so for me, that was proof, and that's evidence to me, as one member, that the work that you explained is happening, is actually happening, because I got to see it with my own eyes. And that just didn't happen at Watson. We also went over to Talbot, same thing. We didn't start at the principal's office. We started walking down the hallways, and we were just randomly going in classrooms, asking what's going on. What are you learning? What are we teaching today? And, like I said, and the teachers didn't seem fazed at all. And so I think what's happened is there's a better culture in this district, and there's more trust amongst educators and administrators, that when you come in that room holding that rubric, that you're not there to catch them in a moment, that they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing, that there's a comfort level in their ability to teach that class, that regardless of what you see, and even if it's not what your expectations are, that they're going to get positive feedback in an attempt to help them get better at what they do, and not drag them down and run them out of the district. And so thank you for the work that you're doing. Fortunate enough to see it, my own eyes, so I know what's happening. And I agree, someone made the comment that it's incremental, and that it's going to take some time, and I agree. And I've seen some peaks and I've seen some valleys in this district, but I'm really impressed, because I think we're now firing on a lot of different cylinders we weren't before. We got the PD, we got the culture, the environment in the district is better, trusting relationships between the union and the administration, the honest feedback and conversations we're able to have amongst each other, without someone feeling as though their jobs are at risk. I think all is important, and I'm sure that if that climate continues, that we'll start to see some incremental progress. And I hope you get to that 10%, because I want to see Mr. Martins actually make good on that and buy you.
I'll tweet it.
What's that?
I'll tweet it.
Thank you. With that, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Coogan?
Yeah, Julia, I hate to tell you, he's probably going to tell you he likes Mexican food, so you'll be eating at Taco Bell. Don't trust him at all.
Thank you very much, but I don't like Mexican food. Too spicy.
That's part of the problem right there. Now he's identified it. Thank you, Joe. I just want to say something. I'm neurotic enough to make it a point to be in the schools as much as I can. I have my graft, and I make sure I visit every school at least two or three times a year. And the best compliment I get echoing kind of what Mr. Costa said is, when you go into a room, they don't even look up sometimes. They don't care. So I believe that, not because I'm there, I believe it's because of learning walks, the principals are in the buildings, the vice principals, a guidance council, adjustment councils. These rooms are very active environments nowadays, and it's reflected in the kids. They might look up a little bit sometimes, but they're the same way. They're used to people being in the room, and it's not like it used to be, even when I was still working at Durfee, where if someone came in the building, it was all, who's here? What's going on? Now, it's like, I go into Green sometimes, and they just say, go wherever you want. They don't even, I go by myself, walking around in a closet or something, but I have fun, so I can't complain. I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Corrigan?
Yes, Dr. Carlson, again, talking about school climate and culture. Prior to Mr. Coogan's first term on the school committee, it was not recommended that a school committee person visit a school. It was looked down upon, as a matter of fact. But Mr. Coogan made it a fact, made it a priority in his first term on the school committee to change that. And with that, the school committee voted in favor of us being able to go into a school. And I've gone with him several times into schools with he and the superintendent, and when I walk into the classrooms, I've been to multiple schools now, I'm really amazed at the culture that's going on inside the classrooms. I'll get right down, if the kids are on the floor working out some project, I get right down there and I say, yo, tell me, what's going on? And they're quick to point out, as Committeeman Costa said there, quick to articulate what they're working on inside that classroom. And the teachers are not phased at all by our presence in there. So these are akin to a learning walk. We're not going in with the same values that you're going in with. We're going in there for strict observation and to see what's going on. And I have to report to the public that for the multiple schools and classrooms I've visited in my short time on this committee, that I'm very pleased to see the level of rigor going on as far as curriculum work is concerned in the classrooms, and the level of creativity and buy-in, and the teachers are young and enthusiastic and energetic. I want the public to know, we're working real, real hard, and the culture has been changed. I want to attribute a lot of that to Committeeman Coogan's voting and raising that as an issue on his first term, because I think that's helped us as a school committee to break down the barriers and go and be one with all of the practitioners in the field. So with that, I yield, and again, I praise your report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Going to move on? Any new, any new business? Okay. There is one reason for executive session. It will be a very brief executive session, and I'm going to ask for a vote in executive session, but before that, Attorney Sade will read the reason for such a call.
Reason for the executive session, we've matched General Law's Chapter 38, Section 21A7, to review and approve executive session committee minutes for the October 15, 2018 regular meeting of the Fall River School Committee. We will reconvene, there may and may not be statements at that time.
I'm sorry, I made an error. Is there also a motion before that motion?
Motion to accept and place on file.
Thank you. All the FYIs, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Correa?
Yes. A motion to enter into executive session for the previously stated reason.
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Correa?
Yes. We will be back. Okay. Ready meeting, we'll come back to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Hetzel?
Here.
Mr. Corrigan?
Here.
Mr. Martins?
Here.
Mayor Correa?
Here. Are there any motions from executive session?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve the executive session minutes for Monday, October 15, 2018.
Motion is made, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Correa?
Yes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.